Citizen Mila here. Congratulations, Rick, on your retirement. I wish you well, as many other people do. And whatever you do, do it well.
I will try my best.
Okay. This young council before you, full of millennials, now has an opportunity to make positive changes to our city. We must remove the traditional pecking order, if you will, process of selecting managers, because it has created what some citizens thought were dynasties. It may have worked in the last century, but the 21st century today is more demanding of our city government. Like many people in our country, our people are still unsettled about the future. It's a new world, and things must be done differently practically every day. With the passing of the 1 percent sales tax, it's time to ante up. On your pitch for the yes votes, we are worth the investment. Prove it. The process you will engage in tonight should be reaching out to the best person with minimum statewide advertising. That person will have new ideas, a good accounting knowledge, good people skills, and a vision for our city. That person should be a licensed engineer in the state of Colorado. Now, there are multiple licenses that you can be an engineer in, and I won't go into that. We need to get the best candidate who wants to come to Lahana and demonstrate an enthusiasm to grow and vitalize our city. It is a huge undertaking, as we all know, and we should now be able to get the best person available. A strong accounting background would be a tremendously helpful supplement. They should be versed in Lahana's storied history and a fighter for funding for our city endeavors that make us great. The candidate shall also have good people skills again and be a leader of various department supervisors without micromanaging them. The citizens should also have an opportunity to meet the candidates. And as a side note, I wasn't in favor of the 1 percent sales tax last year, but I always stated wherever I went and wherever I spoke, I would support the will of the people, and I still intend to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Okay. Moving on, discussion of city manager job vacancy and hiring process. Dean, how do you want to start off? Do you want to go over the document you handed out?
What I did do was send each of you folks the wording out of the charter with regard to what the requirements of the city manager are. I sent you a flyer from Colorado Municipal League with regard to their view of what steps are needed to be taken. I recall at our last meeting what we were going to do tonight, at the beginning at least, was to try to identify two things. One is, what are we looking for? Not in the type of person necessarily, as much as an interim, interim city manager, an interim manager or city manager. We have to fill the void, obviously, in the short term, so what does that mean? I'm calling that the interim, interim city manager, for lack of a better appellation there. But the second thing would be, if we're going to have a selection committee, what type of individual are we looking for to be a member of that committee? Those were the two things that I thought we were going to do tonight.
Okay. I have the document you gave out.
Okay.
I have job description, so I just want to make sure we're all in agreement here. Job description for city manager and interim city manager, okay? The committee that we talked about, you know, looking for people. And then I have some firms, search firms, that I have reached out to and they've responded back to. So, and do we want to add anything to that? Do we want to... Are we missing anything that we've done?
Just a question for Paul. Will any of these search firms assist in developing a job description?
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. The question was, will the search firm assist in developing a job description, or is that on us?
I did not ask that. I thought we were going to do the job description, so that... I didn't even do that, but I could always reach out to them. Out of the three, one is SGR, which is the one that did Lamar's city manager search. The other one is Baker Tilly. That's the one Rick's always sending me, you know, openings for.
SGR.
Yep. And then Raph Talis is the third one. Raph Talis. They've all reached out. SGR's the only one that's turned in a quote so far, but the other two are working on it, and they should have those any day now. I'll send those to Mal, and then she can send them out.
And hey, Paul, you know, just because I've been around so long and I've read them for decades and stuff, they'll help you if that's what you want. They'll give you a list of services of, you know, do you nail with, you know, the what you want the city manager, or do you want to just take what you got and put it inside documents and stuff? So they'll work both ways.
On the job description, I thought we were going to kind of look at what we already had. That's just my understanding. And then if we wanted to make changes to that, that's kind of what we were thinking.
Do we have a copy of the current job description? Is anything in?
I don't.
Yeah.
Was it in the...
Just the contract.
Well, just with the charter.
The charter.
Right.
Okay. I'll have Dawn shoot you guys out, you know, what the job description was, okay?
Okay. Is that...
No, it's just one.
25 years old, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. It's the same one they hired Dan Malorong, the same one they hired me on.
Well, that's a good place to start. I would just put out that I think part of the process is we need to, we need to do some information gathering before we can finalize a job description, in which I think that includes some public process of gathering what people want, what people of Lahana want out of a city manager. So I certainly think having a conversation with the city council about what we see, but I think it needs to be more inclusive in that.
Also, the document that Dean sent out, we did post on our Facebook, so if anybody wants to download that and look that up, that's from CML, it was like 40 pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How to hire a local government manager. Excellent document. Thank you all.
So what's the pleasure? Do we want to discuss job description more, or what are we thinking on that? Do we need that? And just referencing the how to hire a city manager, the first thing was to look for an interim city manager in that place. Do we need the job description for that, or what are you guys feeling on that level? I can't make motions or do any of that, so I'm just...
With the interim, then is that job description going to be time-based as well?
That's what we can talk about right now, yeah.
And with the interim position, they become an employee of the city council.
Correcting?
Yes.
Which the charter. I guess demands, and so it's the rules for it and determining that, so it's...
So is that going to be put in there?
Looking to make an answer?
Mike.
He's right. Yes. Your employee, terms and length of service and this and that and the other are all up to you folks as that gets negotiated. I would like to see that at least there's some general parameters created as to what interim means. I believe that the search process is going to take more than a day or two. I have no idea, and I'm a novice at this, but I would believe it would be months. I don't know how long the school district had to fight through it. Last time they did it, or the OJC, how long they did it, or the hospital, how long they had to go through it. But I think it's more months than weeks, and so I think that we need to sort of get a grasp, an understanding, a view of just what interim means. Is it going to be a two-year deal, five-year deal? In which case, it might as well just be city manager, or is it just going to be until a replacement is determined? I think it's important to know all those things.
Well, according to the charter, that position is for an undetermined amount of time, correct?
City managers at will, yes. But with any, in today's world, no offense to the charter, employees or prospective employees want more solid terms than at will. It's your bidding. If you want an at-will, it's at-will.
So we have to come up with two top structures. One for interim.
Yeah.
Which would be fair to everybody, because the charter doesn't really allow for an interim. The only thing it references is in the absence or temporary absence of city managers can designate somebody by putting that name with a clerk and going in or assisting his duties for a temporary period of time, whether it's a sickness or just an absence.
That's more like if he's still coming back, not that, you know...
That's the only guidance the charter allows for, and that's not very much.
Well, if that's the case, then it seems like we probably should determine if we're going to start a search for a permanent city manager, and if we need a motion.
If we need a motion.
To discuss it.
And the way I understood it at our last meeting is you guys wanted me to look for a committee, and you had some parameters, and just so everyone knows what we kind of talked about, those who weren't here. We wanted someone from higher ed. We wanted someone from K through 12. We wanted someone from the hospital, healthcare field. We wanted someone from our industrial park area, and then just like a regular citizen, and the mayor, and a councilman, right? Seven, max seven-person committee, so... What we all want that committee to end up doing, that's also going to be up for discussion as well, too, so...
So going back to the interim, let's say that if the qualified candidate is someone that has the knowledge of Lahana and how things run here, are we going to put into the job description that, like, training? Is that going to be part of it, or...
Well, that's the real wild card. If there's going to be a national search.
Right.
And if familiarity with the culture and lore of the area is a significant issue to you, I mean, I think you guys are going to have to hash that out, what that means, because you're not going to find somebody from Ohio that even knows where Lahana is.
But would we be expecting the interim to be kind of guiding?
I think that's the ultimate question.
So then the interim, we're going to go out, like you had stated, to possibly the two-year mark in that contract, and these are what is expected within that?
That would be more contract negotiations, yeah.
Well, or job description, or what?
And I think that's a little bit ahead of where we are. I would like to think that the search people, and I haven't dealt with them, maybe, Rick, you have, I haven't, but maybe they can tell us realistically to look at the candidates, to interview, to do all of the performance that they're going to recommend. It's going to take six months, two months, two years, I don't know. Three to four months.
Yeah. The document we got said three to six is standard, so...
SRG told me up to five.
Yeah.
So they're all...
Yeah.
Depends how far the advertising...
I'm sorry. We're not taking questions from you guys.
Huh?
We're not taking questions.
So in determining this job description, do we need that other document before we...
I think the job description comes after... I think the first thing we need to decide is if we are going to initiate a search for a permanent city manager. And then what follows from that is appointing both the search committee and an interim, an interim manager. But I think the first thing that makes sense for the council to do is to make our intention clear that we're doing a search and hiring a search firm to do that. And to that end, so we can have discussion on that, I'll make a motion that the council votes on hiring a search committee. I don't think we're at the place where we decide which one, but hiring a search firm with the intent of commencing a search for a permanent city manager, thinking it'll be about a six-month timeline for the search to play out. Are they going to want that job description? Sorry, I made a motion, so that's all right.
Dawn's going to send that tomorrow.
So by doing that...
There's a motion on the floor. If there's no second, that will die. Here, none?
I second that.
Okay. Now discussion. Now you guys can discuss.
So are you saying by hiring a search firm that will find, that will look for the city manager that locals couldn't apply?
Oh, no, absolutely. Anyone can apply. I mean, hiring a...
Well, that's what we need to clarify, because to me, if I, if we're hiring a search party, and like, how would locals be able to, if the search, if the, if the firm is going to look for them?
Well, they don't look for them. They help with the process of...
But do they have candidates, too, that are like people that are...
I hope not. I mean, for it to be a fair and transparent search, it would just be put out that city of Lahana is hiring a city manager, here's the job description, and that's probably, I would guess, a month at a minimum away from being to that point.
And then the committee would, you know, weed it out a little bit before they come to the final, you know, level right there. They're going to get, work with this, well, the committee, and say, okay, what do you guys want? Do you want locals to apply? Do you want it to go this far? What are you looking for? What do you, what's important to you? So I would say, absolutely, you could be from Lahana, you could be from Maine, it's just whatever, you know, however they put that out there and what we end up back with it.
Then I don't have a problem with making your resolution or your motion. I would like clarification on time. When you do start this search, obviously, Rick's still in the room, and you can hear everything we're saying.
That's okay.
Well, he's, I mean, you know...
You'll be able to walk him up.
No, I mean, he knows how this works. I mean, we're not doing anything that isn't totally standard for, I mean, just the search processes I've been on before. You know, the president of the university announces that they are retiring, resigning, whatever the path is for their departure, and then immediately the governing body starts... That, it's really our only job, is to hire and...
Because we really can't advertise for candidates for the position, when the position's still occupied. Is it, am I wrong there?
Yeah, you can.
Sure you can.
I think you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
After the motion on the floor, which is should we search, I think we should dispose of that one way or another, and then I'd like to comment to you what I think the next step would be. Could we call for the question there, please?
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Jeremiah, can you hear?
Yeah.
Is that your vote?
Yeah.
Yes, you can hear, yes, you're voting. That's unanimous. All right. Mr. Maloff.
I think the whole purpose of having a search committee is to do two things. One, to develop the job description, and two is to go through the selective process of weeding out the undesirables or the non-sustainable positions. I think that the critical issue now is, who's going to be on the search committee? Are they willing to serve? Will they sit down and pound out what the job description should be? And that's why we have a mayor and a city councilman on the deal, and that's why we're looking for other CEOs or someone of that nature to help us do what's appropriate in the 22nd century, 21st century. Whatever. When are you retiring, Rick? So that's their job, in my view. I don't think we need to develop a job description today. We've got the charter as a guideline, but there is resources that are out there that will help us know what city managers' job descriptions are and whether that's appropriate or not. So I would be advocating that your next step is, do you want a search committee? And if so, the seven positions that the mayor articulated, is that okay with you? And then somebody designated to contact those people and see if they're willing to help us, take it step by step.
I thought that's what you asked me to do last time.
You're the mayor, whatever you want to do.
Well, I already did my homework. That's what my, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All I'm waiting for is a council person, if we, you know, go that route, and then I'll give you guys my list, and you guys say yea, or you say nay.
So, so tonight, we could go ahead and vote on a council member to be on that committee?
Do you want a search committee? Let's take it that way.
Yeah.
You want a search committee. The seven positions that the mayor suggested, are you happy with that? That's two votes. Then who's going to go and solicit their participation? Just because we named someone doesn't mean that they're willing to serve, unless you've contacted them. You have? Like I say, the mayor can do no wrong.
I'm just being proactive, if you guys told me to get on the roll.
So I would like to make a motion to go ahead and select a search committee.
I second that.
Any discussion? Not a loss for your vote. Jeremiah?
I voted, yeah.
That passes unanimously. All right. Do you want me to give you the individuals I reached out to, and then we pick a council member to serve with me in this committee? How do you guys want to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
From higher ed, I reached out to Gary Addington. He said he would be more than willing to do that. From K through 12, I reached out to the newly resigning Rick Lovato. He said he would be thrilled to do that. He's leaving in June, I believe. For the industrial park, Brett McIntosh, who is the plant manager at Willis-Boltton, said he would be delighted to do that. From the community at large, MJ Romano said she would love to serve on that committee. And from the hospital, Andy Fleming would love to be on that committee as well, too. All of them were enthusiastic, Dean. They loved the idea, so...
Would that be a conflict with the hospital?
That'd have to be from Dean if it would be.
I don't think so. Good question.
I don't think so, too.
And then myself, so I draw myself, but I'd be more than willing to be on that committee. So we just need one council member with me.
I'll make a nomination with Chandra Choa.
A nomination or a motion?
A nomination. Chandra Choa.
Okay. I got a, I got a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Not a loss for your vote.
Well, I guess, I'm curious, Chandra, is that something that you want to do? Feel like you got...
When will the, when will the meetings and such be to go over and sit during the day?
I can't call it now, but it would probably be like around 5:30. I would guess that all of them are working and, you know, doing stuff, so I'd say in the evenings, not during the day. There might be a day here and there that we have to get something done with the search committee. I mean, with the search firm that we have to do, but we'll be pretty flexible. We also can use technology to zoom in and do something like that.
Yeah. I know. I appreciate it, but I think I'll pass on that. Paul, I really do appreciate the thought, but just for the time and such, so...
Those are things we have to consider.
Thank you very much for that. And at that, with that being said, then I would motion for Lisa Pantoya.
Wait, 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 wait. We have a discussion now. We got to, we got to end that motion. I mean, we can vote now, so just vote.
Please, no?
Yeah. That ends that motion, and now you can motion to nominate.
So I'd like to motion, make a motion for Lisa Pantoya to sit on the hiring or the committee?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
Lisa, do you want to?
I do.
Okay. That makes it easier. I'd ask for your vote. Any other session? Not a loss for your vote. Jeremiah?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. All right, so now you have a search that's going to go out. You have a search committee that is approved. That search committee will now do the job description, and the search firm will be in charge of getting that part of it done. Do we want to talk about interim manager?
Yeah, we're going to have to make that decision. I guess we can talk about pretty much anything, right?
Right.
If we have a candidate. I don't have anybody in mind right now without talking to anybody.
Mr. Maloff, do you have any guidance on this?
Yeah, I do. I don't want to influence your ultimate decision, so I think this is a different question than the ultimate decision, so I hope that we won't read too much into this. But I think that you're looking tonight for who is going to help you with continuity issues, familiar with the supervisors, familiar with the projects that are going on, familiar with the city. Arguably, that's why you had an assistant city manager. It may not be your hire, but that was the whole thought process of developing so that we weren't caught with our shoes untied if something were to happen. So I think interim-wise, you should be looking from within, and then that gets its past of that hurdle until the committee can do their initial job, and then you can do the screening and mooring, the public can give their input, and do all the very valid things that you, everybody suggested. But I think continuity is a real issue here. You've got 100 employees in the city, or maybe it's 71, how many is there?
About 100.
About 100 that would like to know who they're working for.
Are we going to request that that interim apply?
That's up to, that's up to that individual.
It is a little bit difficult when we've seen what happened with Mrs. Choa here, you know, we don't want to nominate someone that says, "No, you know, thank you for the nomination, but we don't, you know, we don't want that type of deal." Right? Would that be correcting?
Yeah, yes, you're right.
So...
So you're going to put it out there for someone to apply for the interim, and then you would make that decision?
Maybe the motion is, the mayor should contact Phil Maloff to see whether he wants to be interim city manager. And I can assure you that if nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve, and, no, nominated, I will not...
I was hoping it was going to be...
If impeached, I'm not going to go quietly, barely.
And as discussed, if they are a current city employee, they would have... they would have to resign from that position to become an employee of the city council without protections? If they are an at-will, because that's the charter. So...
That's a complicated question, but the answer is that the interim city manager is your employee. Uh, I don't think they have to resign as a city employee, actually Mr. Klein's employee, but they would become your employee. And I think that's the simple way of looking at it. I don't think there's need to be any resignation as such. You know, when, when they, when they put me in, uh, back in 99, um, uh, they, uh, just, uh, took a vote and, uh, then, uh, there was a, uh, sheik that came through saying, uh, okay, they're changing this job title from assistant city manager to city manager.
I don't know if, I don't know if that was a correct way of doing something.
Yeah. Well, that's why they did it. Uh, that's all I know.
If they don't, if they don't have to resign and they become the interim, do they go back to their position?
The reason I don't think they have to resign is, is that we're asking them to fill on a temporary basis a position, and, uh, they have an entitlement, I don't wanna say right to work, because Colorado doesn't have that, but their continued employment as an employee after we get past the interim kind of thing and we have it, that's up to city manager. We can't influence that. Some city manager-elect.
Yeah, but whenever you have a, a new city manager coming in, I mean, I don't wanna scare anybody, that's not, but you don't know what they're, they're gonna do, or how they're gonna work, or how they're gonna, you know, run their, their thing. So, uh, it's not to say he won't be safe, but they might have a different way of doing things. They might, you know, not need that. I don't think resign, but maybe reassign certain things. For instance, I'm gonna pick on, let's say it was a water person. You know, well, let's reassign your water duties while you're interim city manager, uh, to do X, Y, and Z while, you know, this person will take care of this, this and this, while you're doing the interim job. Now, whether that ends up going back to that person if they wanted it at the end, you know, we, ultimately, the new city manager's gonna, you know...
In our world, they call it a detail. So I could leave mine to go detail over here and then go back to mine if I chose to or, okay, that's, yeah.
That's, that's accurate, but at the end of the day, the city manager is gonna be, whoever we pick is gonna be in control of who's doing what position and who's assigned what and, and all of that. So we're only in control of picking this next city manager and interim right now, but who they pick after that is, is out of our control.
I, I get that. So they, if they, that doesn't mean they automatically go back to what they were doing before because the new city manager...
It's not said they couldn't, but it's also to say that they...
Yes.
I think it's just a 50/50 chance, so, okay.
So where are we charter-wise, since the city manager can abolish or create positions or departments? The interim would not have that authority. I couldn't hire and fire anybody.
That's up, again, the way...
So I'm, I'm just trying to stay true to the charter here and, and make sure that we don't step on ourselves, because the only way the charter can be changed is by voting the people.
You're accurate about that.
And the first step of city government and, and the order of charter is people are our bosses, the citizens are. So like I said, that's why I wanna stay as close to the city charter. Not ask for, I'm gonna be right smack dab in the middle of it in a way I put it here. So...
Okay, we're splitting hairs, in my opinion. I don't, and with all respect to you, Councilman, I think, I think that we're getting caught in the weeds a little bit. The, whoever the person is, you wanna hire Phil Maloff, and he says, no, I don't want the job. Well, then you gotta talk to somebody else. As a matter of contract, not charter, contract, if there is a relationship between the council and this other person. Well, if we're talking about ability to hire and fire, which seems to be a sore spot here, I believe that is on a temporary basis. That's the whole purpose of the term interim, is temporary. That's a matter of contract. And if the terms of the contract are, we're gonna pay Phil Maloff a gazillion dollars, he might say, hey, okay, or the contract could say, we're gonna pay him a McDonald's hamburger once a week. That may not be acceptable. So I, I think we're, with all respect, I think we're a little ahead of ourselves uh, as to what, we've gotta decide on it, on whether we were looking for an interim manager. I think you've decided that. Somebody's gonna have to approach somebody if it's gonna be internal. We haven't decided that. Then that person has some flexibility to say, yes, I'm willing, or no, I'm not. The benefit of, in my view, internally is, is that we can accept the job description that's already in place and not have to invent that wheel before we go out and hire somebody. So it's Phil Maloff, if you wanna be the temporary city manager, you got that job description, that's how it is. Then the only variable is, let's decide on the wage. The, I think that is not offensive to the charter. The, the stuff about resigning as an employee, is academic to me and not necessarily an important issue here. If, I, if the important issue is, you want a term manager, fine. You're gonna look outside, you're gonna look inside. You're gonna look inside, who are you gonna talk to and who's gonna do it? And I think you preserve the job description of the interim manager as whatever's in place now. It may change for the permanent guy, but not for the interim guy.
We, we don't even know what that is, though.
The job description. Yeah. You'll be getting that tomorrow. Don, I'll get back and see, she'll see if it out to us. Paul's right, though. It's not gonna bend the charter. The charter's gonna control what the job description is, and you can read it again for yourselves. But that's what he's responsible for, and as a matter of just common sense here, we know what the job description is, what we've expected of Rick, written or unwritten, and there you have it. It's temporary, guys, it's temporary.
So would it be proper to have a motion for an interim city manager to apply for, if it's internally? Give them a week to submit their interests and then we can, we can talk about it on Monday? Or no, where am I?
That.
Yeah, that gives them time if it's interim and just know that, you know, you're not resigning, but giving up, you're at will at that point.
If I could structure the motion, and I agree as a thousand percent, Mr. Mayor, work that down. I would say that the motion needs to be that the council wants to hire an interim city manager for the period of time until a permanent position is filled. And that solves that problem. Then your comfort level, the mayor's suggestion is, uh, maybe just say any, anybody internally that's interested, let us know within the next four or five business days, maybe you wanna do that. Don't forget, you're gonna have to talk about wages at some point, and maybe that's a legitimate question. Certainly that the, the budget issues are gonna come into play, but that's something that if somebody were going to apply on, I'm willing to work for the next four months as interim city manager, but I expect that we pay two hamburgers a week. And french fries. You know, whether you do that tonight or you do it some other time.
I think the contract negotiation would be a little bit longer, in my opinion.
Alright, to that end, I will make a motion that we intend to solicit, uh, letters of interest for, uh, being an interim city manager. And that the timeframe on that is, uh, I feel like the end of business on this Friday, have those letters. They should go to our mayor, and, um, the council will review and discuss and make a decision next Monday. That's my motion. Nothing to do with french fries.
Did we say, um, just, um, we also added up until we get a permanent?
Yeah, and that the, the intention is that they will serve as the interim city manager up until the point that the permanent city manager assumes the position.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
With the, um, until the new city manager takes that position, what if that's within, um, eight, eight months?
That's...
So that's where I want that timeframe of at least, you know, you've got it, an interim city manager that's got a wealth of knowledge. We need to be sharing that, and it can't be done in just a short amount of time. So can we put a timeframe on that for the interim to be not to exceed or a timeframe of it?
I, I, we don't know. Here's why. Our heart is set on hiring Rick Klein, who is the city manager in Gainesville, Florida. Why would you ever wanna come here? Uh, he's got to then give notice to his people, and there may be, he's not available for 90 more days or something. So I think that the safety here is until a permanent position's filled. Now, two months from now, you know, I can have that shaken out. You can change it. But I think until the position is filled is the safe bet for today.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Jeremiah?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Alright, what else do we have that we need to look at?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that if, I think Councilman Pantoya, councilperson Pantoya, suggested that we have until Friday, I think we should ju- just consensus is sealed, then we'll direct it to the mayor.
Or email.
Yes, and that was mooring.
It was mooring?
Yes.
Okay, still a good idea.
Was it stipulated, was it stipulated as an internal, sir? Or anybody? I didn't hear it.
It sounded internal, but...
No, he said internal. Or that was part of my motion, I thought.
What was that?
In that we're gonna get the job description emailed tomorrow?
Yep.
So if anybody wants to know what they're getting into?
And we'll post that.
That'll be available.
Anything else we wanna go over regarding the city manager position? I don't want you guys to get in the lead.
Joe, on the, the only question I have about the committee, and I think it's a good committee, should we not include our HR person from the city as a non-voting member, just for guidance and being able to...
I have no problem with that.
I do.
Do you?
I, certainly that wealth of knowledge, that's a good idea. But she's now voicing to the committee, and she's her boy and enjoy.
Alright.
I think with Andy Fleming and Ken Brad and a lot of them here, they've got a lot of that hiring experience and leadership or knowledge, so.
And if I remember correctly, Attorney Maloff, uh, agreed to serve.
No, and I already tried that one.
No? No?
No.
I thought for sure you said that you would help that.
Thank you, but we want it to be a successful endeavor.
Oh, before I forget too, just so I'm on record, it's live, um, I have absolutely zero interest in being city manager. They, Rick, for what he does, but I have no intention.
You can't do it anyway, the charter says.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna give it up. I'm not gonna, I'm not doing any of this. So don't ask me, don't stop me in one more, don't say, it's not happening, it's, it's not gonna happen. Why would you wanna take that information? Yeah, don't, I'm not doing it. It, you throw whatever out there, it's not gonna happen for me. Anything else? If not, don't...
I have one more picky point, but it's important to me and hopefully important to other people. Our charter, as lovely and solid as it is, uh, only has he/him pronouns when discussing a city manager, and I wanna make it absolutely clear that we all understand that is outdated language, and everyone is, uh, welcome to be a city manager.
This is a joke. We gave you guys the right to vote and driver's licenses. What more do you want?
You wanna be city manager?
I think if you look in the ordinances, we've got a, a curative ordinance that talks about pluralities and gender.
Well, that is good to know. I was a little worried that we were still in Echem. Yes, it is, yes, it is.
They were saying the Pledge of Allegiance on the way.
Yeah, that's how you go by.
Alright, um, with that, I will adjourn us. Thank you all for coming out tonight.